Call the meeting to order. Call the row.
Bolt.
Here.
Gillum.
Here.
Harrod.
Here.
Finley.
Here.
Rofer.
Here.
Sehorn.
Here.
Salter.
Here.
We have a corn.
Thank you. Would you stand and please join me in the invocation?
Let's pray. Almighty God, we come before you this evening with thankfulness for all that you've given us. We appreciate being able to live in this great city. Lord, we pray for this city commission. May the work that they do here this evening be pleasing unto you. We pray that you will keep us safe from harm. We'll give you the praise and the glory. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Please join me in the flag. Attention, position, pledge.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where this extends, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I can be seated. Are there any items on the consent agenda that any commissioners would like to pull? Seeing none, would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda?
(Inaudible).
Moved by Commissioner Harrod. It's your second?
Second.
By Commissioner Bolt. Any further discussion? Call the question. Motion carries seven zero. Item two, presentation by Animal Control of the Pet of the Week.
Hello. I'd like to introduce you all to Miko. Miko's approximately eight and a half weeks old. She is the last puppy out of the litter that we have. Her adoption is going to be $5 with the $25 spent in her deposit due to her age. I'm not going to retire the city tag, but once she gets a little bit older, if you live in town, you'd have to have the city tag. She's a sweet little girl, very active. She's healer mix. And anybody interested can contact the shop.
Great. Thank you very much. She's a cutie. Item three, citizens' participation. I would remind you, we have a three-minute per person limit and a 12-minute per topic limit. If someone would like to speak, then come to the podium, tell us who you are, sign in, and speak your piece.
Thank you. My name is Craig McIntyre. I'll write this after I'm finished. My wife and I own a couple of businesses downtown, but the one I want to talk to you tonight about is Spoklahoma, the bike shop. And I wanted to thank both the City of Shawnee for your support in the events we put on. We had a bike race last year, and we kind of organized the Santa ride. The second thing I'd like to thank is the Blue Zones Project. I think a lot of their initiatives are really well-aligned with what we do. And we've seen, since they've been having their outreach to get people active and in the community and trying to be more healthy, a lot more traffic into the shop. Plus, we have a lot, we've seen at least a dozen people who've started commuting to work by bike or commuting to school. And so, I think from both the health point of view and, at least in my case, an economic point of view, their work here is really worthwhile, and we appreciate them.
Thank you, Craig.
My name's Daniel Shawnee. I too wanted to thank you guys for your volunteer work. Many people don't realize the amount of hours that you have to put in to make this successful. And we really believe in this community and the work that you guys are doing, as evidenced when we helped spearhead and lead the $30 million tax project that we had over the summer. And with the things that have happened since then, I want you to know that we are undaunted. We are still excited. With the wonderful things that you guys have set into place over the previous just couple of years, with Blue Zones, with Community Renewal, Neighboring 101, and the good things that are happening here, we're excited. But also, we know that you guys are under a lot of pressure with things that are going on. But know that, please, that you have support throughout the community. I hear very little negative, and I'm out all over the community, and most of what I hear is positive for the direction that we're going in. I wanted to let you know that we wanted to help as well. This year, the Christmas parade was not going to be able to go like it usually would, but we are going to make sure that it happens and show it live for the elderly or those who cannot get out. The Christmas parade is one of our greatest events, along with, I believe, the Kiwanis Little Olympics in bringing people together within our community from all ages and from all sectors. And so, we're very excited about this week happening, and we hope that you all can be at the parade and hopefully be included in the parade. And when you get home, you can watch yourself now on TV, which is right on Facebook. So, again, thank you all very much for what you do. We know that it's not easy, and thank you for the decisions that you make.
Thank you, Daniel.
Hi, my name's Linda Brown, and I'm from St. Anthony Shawnee Hospital. And I just want to say thank you and how excited I am to be a member of this community. One of the things that the hospital is required to do as a nonprofit is to complete a survey every three years called a Community Health Needs Assessment. Not that I've ever had to do it in isolation, but this last time that we completed that, just this last month, actually, we had just an awesome group of people that helped contribute to that because we truly are all on the same page. We want to identify the needs of our community so that we can work together as a group to work on those things. So, you'll be seeing more things from us as we continue to work. It's great to have the partnerships that we have here in our community. The Blue Zones Project will, it also contributes to that as well with their manpower and brain power. And the things that we are going to be able to help participate in, we're excited and looking forward to. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda.
Good evening. I'm visiting you from Nashville, Tennessee. I'm Teri Merritt-Warden, and I'm representing the National Blue Zones Office. And I'm here to thank you for all of the support that's happening, not just here, but throughout the community. The team is doing just an incredible job because of the support it has within the city. But what I'm here to talk about tonight is your nearest other Blue Zones community, Fort Worth, Texas. They just completed their fifth year and have become a Blue Zones-approved community, and I wanted to share with you some of their successes, because I think you all are slated for them, similar ones. Well-being continues to decrease in the United States. We use the Gallup Well-Being Index as our gold standard metric for well-being in the Blue Zones Project. And Fort Worth, when they started back in 2014, their well-being in the metropolitan service areas of the largest 190 in the country was 185. And this year, their well-being has actually increased four points, which I know that's hard to understand what four points is, but it moved them from 185th to 58th in the United States. And what you have to understand is well-being in the United States in general continues to go down, unfortunately, in the past few years, whereas in the Blue Zones communities, it's starting to continue to either stabilize or go up. They spent a significant, and sorry as I use my notes, I just don't want to quote the facts wrong here, they spent a significant amount of time working on policy, both tobacco policy and built environment. And in 2014, Fort Worth has seen a, since 2014, they've seen a 31% decrease in smoking incidents rates following the Blue Zones Project implementation. Youth smoking and e-cigarette smoking use has also decreased, with the percentage of youth reporting at least one cigarette or vape for 30 days decreasing 9% in the last two years. The other most important thing is life savings in healthcare related to that decrease in smoking cessation is equivalent to about $1.9 billion in healthcare utilization, and a total of about $20 billion savings in healthcare, in total savings of disposable income that could be used elsewhere in the community. Other health improvements that have included at least of people being more active, walking at least 30 minutes per day, and also increase in fruit and vegetable consumption. You probably have noticed that those are things that Blue Zones really focuses on. The other improvements since 2014, excuse me, a broad coalition has also been supporting the city of Fort Worth efforts to adopt plans such as complete streets, active transportation, and safe routes to school. That will guide the future decision-making on an even more vibrant and active community. Going forward, they have committed plans to advance more work by more than $30 million in support that has been secured through grants and also continued funding possibilities through bond projects. That includes about $15 million for sidewalks and bicycle infrastructure, $5 million for safe routes to school in a 2018 bond package, and $656,000 for community and school gardens, increasing the fresh fruits and vegetables that are available in corner store markets. Again, Fort Worth is not Shawnee, but if you use the relativity, you can imagine what you really could reap in the benefits in your continued work with Blue Zones Projects. Thank you.
Thank you, Teri.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm Holly Gordon, and in this capacity tonight, I'm coming forward before you with, as the chairperson for the Potawatomi County Food Policy Council. Big mouthful, so we just call ourselves the Food Policy Council. Thank you all very much for last year creating a resolution to form this group that is a countywide representation looking at our food access systems. How do people get food in Potawatomi County? And that's really what we've been tasked to look at. So, since then, we've been meeting regularly, monthly. We have had a webinar, a conference call with Douglas County, Kansas, who has a thriving Food Policy Council, because we're still trying to figure it out. We've gotten an inventory of school nutrition, education, and opportunities of how we can best support our schools within our county. And in January, we're planning a council retreat, so this should be pretty interesting. But the best thing that I love is that we are working together with our countywide partners, which is our city governments, our school systems, our food system people, our restaurants. Who works with food, grocery stores? How do people get their food? For many of us, it's get in your car and you drive to the grocery store, simple as that. For some of us, we ride a bicycle, we go to the store, we buy our food. Some people who live in rural Potawatomi County, it's not that easy. How do people get their food? So, we're forming a food access assessment. It sounds really fancy. It's not. It's a couple of questions. And we really want to know, how do people get food? And what does that look like for each individual, for each community within our county? And then really looking at, where are the gaps? Where are we falling behind? Are there already resources and programs out in our communities that are addressing this? How do we make linkages with people who may have access and people who may not have access? So, that's kind of where we are with the Food Policy Council for Potawatomi County. And I know we don't have any time for questions, because that's not the dealio, but as we move forward, we will bring more opportunities for discussion before the council. And we're taking this also to McLeod and Earl'sboro and Tecumseh and Macomb, anywhere else where this needs to be addressed. That's it.
Thanks, Holly.
Thanks.
Hello, my name's Rachel Monday, and I'm here to represent Community Renewal today. So, I just wanted to give you all an update on the lot in Kikapu Park that was donated to Community Renewal. Over this past year, it has been turned into a community garden that was not only used by our kids club, but also by the community that lives in Kikapu Park. So, we planted about half of the lot with veggies, and we had our kids club harvest them last spring and over the early summer. And that food was given out to different households in, sorry, in Kikapu Park. The goal moving forward is to plant more fruits and vegetables, and our long-term goal is to use the back half of the lot to put fruit trees in. So, I just wanted to come and say thank you for that donation and to just let you know that it's being used well, and that kids are learning the importance of eating healthy. So, thank you.
Hi, my name is Tom Claybrook. I live at 1501 North Union here in town. Mayor, would it be all right if I approached the dis and gave you copies of the city's documents?
I'm here tonight because I was publicly accused of giving false data to you guys four weeks ago. As I told you then, the numbers came from official city documents. The first document you have is from the 2018-19 city budget, which this body adopted on June the 18th and became effective July the 1st. It states that as of that date, the beginning fund balance of the general fund was $4,391,000, showing the far-right column top number. The second number I gave you was from the second page, which is a letter from the city's finance director pursuant to my FOI request. It states that the unreserved fund balance as of October the 29th was $610,982. Maybe I should have given you the number on the right, which is the total combined general fund number, of $947,000 to accurately compare apples to apples. If so, then the difference between the budget number and the current number would be $3,444,000, not the $3,780,000 I gave you. A distinction without much difference. There is still an enormous difference between the two numbers, which should be virtually the same, since the finance director said that no money has been taken from the fund balance this fiscal year. All numbers I gave you are official city numbers. If any of them are false, they were falsified by the city personnel who published them, not by me. As far as the additional numbers I quoted in a letter to the news star, those pertaining to prior-year fund balance are the ending fund balance numbers under the general fund on page one. Those pertaining to the street fund are on page three, which comes from the 63017 budget audit document. On page four, the 2017 general fund numbers might be of interest when compared to the same numbers on page one. And page five are employment numbers. As you can easily see, every number I have stated has come directly from official city documents, which are readily available to the person who accused me of attempting to deceive you. When I came before you, I was not accusing anyone of anything. I was simply asking why the large difference between two numbers, which should be equal. The city manager acknowledged to the news star that the fund balance is currently at a low level, prompting him to encourage 21 senior employees to retire early. He said that the balance had been brought down over time in a methodical manner. It seems to me that if that were the case, it would have been reflected in the yearly budgets, and you would have been made aware of it. Thank you for your indulgence, and I hope you all have a Merry Christmas.
Mr. Claybrook, would you indulge me in a meeting with you and the finance director at your convenience to perhaps exchange some thoughts on this and maybe clear the air on it?
Okay.
At your convenience, where available.
I've got a lot more time than you do, I'm sure.
I'll match your availability. I'll match your availability.
You want me to call you, or you call me?
Can I meet you after? Or you can sit around a minute. I'd love to talk to you.
I've got something. My wife's taken off with a load of dogs tonight, and I gotta help her get them over.
Oh, sure. Please call me and I'll, we'll be, thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Anyone else?
I'm running out of room on my.
I know, last one, baby. Rachel Milo, here on behalf of Blue Zones Project and a business owner. And I just wanted to publicly give some accolades to Justin DeBruin and all of the work he has done in his tenure here as our city planner, not only researching great ways for our city to advance and be better, but also working in our department overall to continue to be more community welcoming and business-friendly, and open to ideas that support and encourage our young business owners to open businesses or take risks, helping them through the permit process or whatever that may be. And we just wanted to publicly thank him not only for that work, but also the work that he has done serving on the Built Environment Committee and the research that we do around whether it's complete streets, or parklets, or active transportation, whatever it may be. And we just wanted to tell him thank you. Thanks.
Anyone else? Going, going, gone. Item four, presentation of Oklahoma Municipal League Certificates to Employees with 25 or More Years of Service. Penny, Penny Kessler with OML.
Hi, Jane. My name's Beverly Rogers with the Oklahoma Municipal League Board of Directors, Mayor of Holdenville. That's how I got on the board. My former neighbor. Good to see you again. Proud to be here today to honor two of your employees. And if I could, have Penny Kessler and Darren Fowler's chief to come forward, please. These employees, 25 years. Penny started July 26, 1993, and Darren on August 30, 1993. Municipal service, as you all know, we're right here at the ground level. People aren't afraid to come up and say, this is what we need, or this is what we're doing, you need to do, or you're doing wrong, whatever. But we're the closest contact to the citizens. And the fact that you have so many 25-year receptions, two at this time, that I think that speaks to the employees, their dedication, their work that they provide to you, and it speaks to the employer. You made a great work environment for them, and that they want to stay here and contribute. So, on behalf of the OML, we want to thank you for your service to your community, and wish you well in your retirement years. And to your captain, Mr. Fowler, if you will convey our appreciation. So, this is Penny's. It's her certificate. And of course, I didn't bring the pins up here with me, I don't think. Yes, I did. Penny, there you go. And your certificate, and an extra. And we thank you on behalf of the league and the citizens of Shawnee. If you will take this to Captain Fowler, we appreciate it. Thank you.
Penny's in the league.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, Beverly.
That is your hook, yeah, right?
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, would you indulge us for a photo?
Absolutely.
You standing there look pretty. I know that's hard for you to do, because you're kind of outshilling. Mayor from the joint, stand there, Mr. Mayor. If you get on Penny's left side, perfect. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Item five, recognition of Justin Beaver for Technician of the Quarter Award from the Oklahoma 911 Authority. Tom?
Good evening, Mayor and Vice Mayor Commissioners. Thank you for allowing me to introduce to you Justin Beaver, who is our Communications Systems Manager for the city. Justin's been with us almost seven years. We have doubled his workload in that seven years, and he's stood up well to the test. Recently, he was the inaugural recipient of the Technician of the Quarter Award from the Oklahoma 911 Authority, also is presented by the Oklahoma National Emergency Number Association. And we're very pleased of that. Justin, in addition to all the duties that he has for us, taking care of sirens, radios, and things like that, we have 20 repeaters that he's responsible for that relate to dispatch. We're now up to eight consoles that the dispatchers use in the dispatch center. And Justin is always really good about working with those people in the dispatch center to let them understand how things work, when there are problems, how we can correct those, when it's important to call him, or there's something that they can do to fix a problem. And he has a really good relationship, which is why he was nominated for this award. So, we're very pleased that he was the recipient of that. He has set the bar very high. He will be one of the four people that will be eligible at the end of the year for the Technician of the Year Award. And so, he does a great job for us. We're very thankful that he's here. Just wanted to take a minute for you to get to see him, and would ask that you join me in congratulating him on his award.
Thank you, Justin.
There's not a shirt on here without the photo.
Thank you. Item six, consider and take action with respect to a resolution of the city commissioners of the City of Shawnee, Oklahoma, approving the incurrence of indebtedness by the Shawnee Municipal Authority issuing its sales tax revenue note, Series 2018, providing that the organizational document creating the authority is subject to the provisions of the note indenture and authorizing the issuance of said note, waiving competitive bidding with respect to the sale of said note, and approving the proceedings of the authority pertaining to the sale of said note, approving and authorizing a sales tax agreement by and between the city and the authority pertaining to the year-to-year pledge of certain sales tax revenues, establishing the city's reasonable expectation with respect to the issuance of tax-exempt obligations by or on behalf of said city in calendar year 2018, and designating the note as qualified tax-exempt obligation, and containing other provisions relating thereto.
Commissioners, this is a resolution related to the incurrence of indebtedness relating to our half a cent $10 million bank qualified financing that we seek to approval on to go up for bid on November 5th last month. I'm going to introduce you to Chris Gander with BOK Financial Securities, who has been our financial advisor on this project. And he had the bid results that he's passing out right now, and he's going to discuss the results with you and then our process moving forward. Chris?
Chris with BOK Financial Securities, and you have Nate Ellis with Public Finance Law Group. We're here to show you the bids we received. Just to go back a little bit, you had the election on June 26th for the half-cent sales tax. After that, Mr. Benson and Chance asked us to come sit down, have meetings with you in small groups. That was on October 26th. And at that time, we talked about several projects, the AMR, some different infrastructure projects that relates to potential waterborne loans, kind of a more all-encompassing kind of financial CIP plan. But at that time, we've kind of gotten a consensus to move forward to funding part of that half-cent sales tax. So, that half-cent sales tax brings in about $3 million per year. So, this is taking part of those funds from that and paying back the $10 million. So, we came back to a council meeting on November 5th and got formal authorization to move forward with this note, and we were going to receive bids today. to move forward with this note. And we were going to receive bids today, and that's what we did. We received bids on the note, $10 million, at 11 o'clock this morning, which you have in front of you. We have four banks that bid on that, Chase Bank First, BBNT, and First United. A couple of those banks, including Chase and BBNT, gave different options. They can't really change any of the terms. We have that fairly firm, what they're really, the options are just as it relates to how early you can prepay the debt. And so as it relates to Chase, you can see they're clearly the low bid, and they gave us three options. Non-prepayable at 290, prepayable at 2023, and it'd be a rate of 3.01%. And then an option C, prepayable 2025 at 2.95%. No penalty. And this is, if you did a bond issue, generally bonds aren't prepayable in the first 10 years anyway. So prepaying it early is just an extra benefit. We also, we spoke to Chance. I, I don't see you guys, this is a dedicated sales tax for only the specific projects that you guys have listed. It's only for 10 years. Even the five basis points between the 2.9 and 2.95, that basically is $22,500 of what it costs you over the life of the 10 years. And, and so if you didn't call the bonds, I just, I, I think that'd be wasted money. So we're recommending that you authorize the issuance of the note and award it to Chase Bank and go with option A, which is non-prepayable, but it's at the lowest rate, 2.9%. I think I would add, if rates went up, which I think generally we, we expect to happen over the 10 years, most banks are more than happy to let you pay their debt off early if, if you're paying them a lower rate than what the market rate is, right? So what we say is, you know, if, if rates go down, you can't pay it off and refund it for financial gain. But the high probability that bank would allow you to restructure for some reason if you needed to. So with that, we're recommending you award it. I think I'd add, you'll have a sister resolution on the council side, and on one of them, you're hiring us, and then on the other one, you're hiring Public Finance Law Group. I don't know why they're on separate, separate agendas. But with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions? Thank you, Chris. Is there a motion to approve?
It's not moved.
Led by Commissioner Bolt, seconded by Commissioner Gillum. Any further?
Just for the record, I might suggest the motion include that the bid be awarded to Chase Bank, option A, non-callable.
Okay. Is that acceptable to your motion?
Yes, I would. So change it to Chase Bank, option A, at non-callable.
Second that.
Second stands. Any further, any other questions, comments?
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to read this into the record briefly, or not so briefly. A resolution of the City Commissioners of the City of Shawnee, Oklahoma, the city, approving the occurrence of indebtedness by the Shawnee Municipal Authority, the authority issuing its sales tax revenue, Series 2018, the note, providing that the organizational document creating the authority is subject to the provisions of the note indenture, authorizing the issuance of said note, waiving competitive bidding with respect to the sale of said note, and approving the proceedings of the authority pertaining to the sale of said note, approving and authorizing a sales tax agreement by and between the city and the authority pertaining to the year-to-year pledge of certain sales tax revenues, establishing the city's reasonable expectation with respect to the issuance of tax-exempt obligations by or on behalf of said city in calendar year 2018, and designating the note as qualified tax-exempt obligation and containing other provisions relating thereto.
Thank you. Any other comments? Call a question. Motion carries seven, zero. Item seven, consider approval of engagement letter with BOK Financial Services, Inc., for financial advisory services.
Commissioners, this is just a standard engagement letter between the city and, or Shawnee Municipal Authority and BOK Financial Services for their, their work on the, this financing. That was in item six, we just approved. This is just reviewing of the financing, collecting the bids. Seventy-five basis points or 0.75% of the actual note proceeds, which is a standard percentage rate.
Any questions of change? Motion to approve? Led by Commissioner Gillum. Second, by Commissioner Sehorn. Are there any other discussion? Call a question. Motion carries seven, zero. Item eight, interim city manager report.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to defer to the second meeting in December, which means with your approval.
Perfect. Is there any new business? Same none. Commissioner comments?
We'll start that in.
Yeah, let's start.
Betty on the spot.
You're on the spot.
Start with Ben.
Thursday is the Christmas parade, and I believe it starts at seven, and entertainment begins at about six in each block, from what I've heard and everything. I think you will have our normal December weather, cold, but no precipitation that I've, that I've read about. And one thing that I like is, there's not going to be a, a reviewing stand or a judges' stand, so people can spread out all up and down Main Street. And those of us that are short, we can, we can see now without looking over four or five levels of, of people. And so I guess, Ed, good, good luck on the parade, since you're heading it all up. And then, don't forget to shop Shawnee. We need, we need the sales tax, and that's our only revenue, so be sure and shop Shawnee.
Thank you.
I have the annual toy run that starts at Fire Lake lineup, which is supposed to be on motorcycles, but maybe a little cold and damp. So unwrapped toy, it ends at the Elks. This will be Sunday morning lineup. The parade begins at one and ends at the Elks. So if you can't ride motorcycles, cars will work.
Thank you, Mark.
Well, I have the Christmas parade, and that's going to get covered from the Hens over here for sure. And ahead's going to have probably backup Ben's details or go over them again, so.
You guys will have it all covered, I guess.
Well, I'm leaving it to you. Go right ahead. Everyone go, come to the parade.
I see Justin DeBruin in the audience today. I've emailed him this last week. I understood that he's departed Shawnee, so I expressed to him our appreciation for his work and his time and all his leadership that, since he's been in the planning department. And again, Justin, publicly, I want to say we really appreciate your hard work. Thank you very much. And best of luck to you and your wife at your new location.
I want to, want to echo the same thoughts. Thank you very much, Justin, for all that you've done for Shawnee. And I know you'll do great up in Boston. It's, it's kind of funny. One day shy of, when, when he goes on the seventh, it'll be one day shy of the 50-year anniversary of when my family moved here from Boston. So we're kind of going the opposite direction 50 years later. So anyway, I think you'll have a good time up there. And it's definitely a different world, different culture, but I think you're a big... Yeah, they already had a bunch of snow. So get used to that, because when I moved here, I didn't know what the ground looked like in the wintertime because it was always white. So I know they asked us what we did in the summer, and of course, that depended on whether it fell on a weekend or not. So the, the climate's a little different, but good, good luck to you, and thank you again for everything you've done here. If you haven't heard, we're having a parade on Thursday. I think last I saw, we had 70-some-odd entrance, entries in the parade. I'm sorry. They're working on that as we speak. So they'll be notifying people tonight, tomorrow, as far as, you know, where they'll be exactly and all of that. But the weather's going to be December weather, it looks like, but I think we're getting up by the skin of our teeth because Friday is supposed to get really nasty. So should be a lot of fun. It always is. We always have a big crowd down there, and it's a good event here in Shawnee. So that's all I've got.
Was, was the official time?
Exactly right. It's six. All the entertainment will start. There'll be a band in every block. So there will be entertainment until the parade reaches their point, and then they become the announcer. And, and Commissioner Salters is exactly right. The idea behind that is to spread it all out. We do not have a reviewing stand where they stop and perform. We make them perform the whole way. So you can see the same parade down at the end as you would at the beginning. There's, there's no reason to be stacked 20 folks deep, you know, get where you can see a, a good view of it, enjoy the show. But it'll, it'll be a lot of fun. So parade will actually start at seven. So, thank you.
We are adjourned to the Shawnee Airport Authority. Recession. Sorry. Item one, consider approval of the consent agenda. Commissioner Rutherford, seconded by Commissioner Harrod. Any discussion? Call a question. Six I's, one absent. Is there any new business?
None.
We are adjourned to the power, we are to the Shawnee Municipal Authority. Once again, consider approval of the consent agenda. Led by Commissioner Rutherford, seconded by Commissioner Bolt. Call a question. Motion carries six, zero. Item two, consider and take action with respect to a resolution authorizing the Shawnee Municipal Authority to issue its sales tax revenue note, Series 2018, in the aggregate principal amount of $10 million, waiving competitive bidding and authorizing the note to be sold on a negotiated basis, approving and authorizing a sales tax agreement by and between the city and, and the authority pertaining to a year-to-year pledge of certain sales tax revenue, approving and authorizing execution of a note, indenture, authorizing the issuance and securing a payment of the note, providing that organizational document creating the authority is subject to the provisions of the note indenture, authorizing and directing the execution of the note and other documents relating to the transaction, establishing the authority's reasonable expectation with respect to the issuance of tax-exempt obligations by the authority in calendar year 2018, and designating the note as qualified tax-exempt obligation, and approving professional service agreements and containing other provisions relating thereto.
Commissioner, this is just the acknowledgement of the debt on the Shawnee Municipal Authority's minutes. I would recommend the same acknowledgement and recommendation that Chris had for item six on the city's agenda item. Let's make the same motion for the Shawnee Municipal Authority. Chase Bank, option A.
Is there a motion?
There is. So I, I move that we accept the, the Chase bid, option A, non-callable.
There a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Harrod.
Mr. Mayor, a resolution authorizing the Shawnee Municipal Authority to issue its sales tax revenue note, Series 2018, in the aggregate principal amount of $10 million, waiving competitive bidding and authorizing the note to be sold on a negotiated basis, approving and authorizing a sales tax agreement by and between the city and the authority pertaining to a year-to-year pledge of certain sales tax revenue, approving and authorizing execution of the note indenture, authorizing the issuance and securing the payment of the note, providing that the organizational document creating the authority is subject to the provisions of the note indenture, authorizing and directing the execution of the note and other documents relating to the transaction, establishing the authority's reasonable expectation with respect to the issuance of the tax-exempt obligations by the authority in calendar year 2018, and designating the note as a qualified tax-exempt obligation, approving professional services agreements and containing other provisions relating thereto.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Call a question. Motion carries six, zero. Consider approval of engagement letter with the Public Finance Law Group, LLC, for bond counsel services.
Commissioners, similar to BOK's arrangement, this is just the agreement for bond counsel services with the Public Finance Law Group. It's 75 basis points of the actual issuance, which is standard with same fee that we've received in the past.
Any questions of change? Motion.
Who made the motion before?
Commissioner Bolt. On for the last item or for the last?
Gillum did.
I move we approve that.
Led by Commissioner Harrod. Seconded by Commissioner Sehorn. Call a question. Motion carries six, zero. Is there any new business?
None, Mr. Mayor.
We will return to the city commission's agenda. Item number 11, receive cybersecurity training from the Oklahoma Municipal Assurance Group. There are underwriters. This is going to be about an hour. Y'all are welcome to stay or not.
Glad you're here, Kevin.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, Commissioners, thank you for having me this evening. I, I know it's at the end of the evening. Guys got places to go, so if I can't make this entertaining, I'll try and at least make it short. I would like to hand out, we always like to give away some O-MAG branded items. Very much. Just some USB thumb drives. I'm sure everybody loves those. Just a quick moment about me. I am the Director of Technology Services for the Oklahoma Municipal Assurance Group. One of our charges is to try and provide cybersecurity training and awareness for the cities that we provide services for. Now, what we do, as you mentioned, we do the insurance, but we're quite a bit more than that. One of the things that we like to try and say is that we're an extension of our cities. So I've actually worked very closely with your IT department years past. We've got a great relationship. We're always trying to help and advise wherever possible. And one of the ways that we can do that is cybersecurity. We are your cyber insurer. And what that means is if the City of Shawnee were to experience a breach, we've got your back. That's it in a nutshell, ultimately. I do want to take a moment to show a quick video. You guys, I'm sure, have seen hackers on television, and I want to take a little bit of a moment of actually showing kind of what it looks like in real life. I think we're still waiting on audio, but... Apologies, we had some, I had some last-minute changes. This is not actually Ryan's issue. This is my own. So I think he's trying to fix my equipment. Give me just a moment.
Sure.
Sure.
Those guys don't make the stand unless you need a job.
Maybe I'll call your cell phone provider.
I bet they're good, I bet they have a good time.
Hi, I'm so sorry, I'm sorry, my husband's like, we're about to black alone, and we got a baby, and he's like, it's done by today, so I'm so sorry, I can't tell you that. And I can't, there's a wedding on, and he's calling me out, but you try and...
It doesn't, thirty seconds. Jessica didn't access my personal email.
I can't get to, are you around right now? You could call me, make me, how many do you have? You would have to send me a picture of your husband. Yeah, well, I think I'll be able to receive it, because I'm on the phone. Oh, I'm not on there either. So I thought when we got married, he added me.
Yes, he was my girlfriend's name, has big social security number.
I don't want to do that.
Set up her personal access line now.
Wait, there's no password on my account right now, can I set that up?
Do you think the support person would change my password?
Thank you so much, we're all today.
You guys get the idea.
Okay, I'm bad. All right, thank you.
So, the idea behind what we just saw is that this is kind of the more modern attack. It's no longer a bunch of guys in hoodies sitting behind a computer in a darkened basement somewhere, coming after us. It's people that are really skilled with communicating with others, and what they're doing is using social engineering techniques. As you can see from what we have here, it looks like stuff you hear about that's coming after like Home Depot, or Target stores, or the federal government. It's not true. We're actually seeing plenty of attacks right here in Oklahoma against other municipal governments, your neighbors. Over here, we see that one of the cities that was hit, City of Lawton, they actually had a piece of malware impact their network. That virus took down parts of their network for up to six weeks. The City of Ardmore had utility payment customer data released on the dark web. Stillwater, same thing, they had utility payment data lost. This one's one of my favorite, did anybody hear about the story in Dallas about six months ago? Dallas's tornado sirens went off in the middle of the night because some hacker decided to play a prank. Lo and behold, a lot of cities use the same technology, those tornado sirens may be vulnerable as well. Some of the more recent ones, though, Midwest City got hacked by an actual hacker, they actually caught that person in their system. They lost utility payment data to the dark web as well. And in the past year and a half, the two most terrifying stories. In the City of Enid, just a summer and a half ago, lost $37,000 of taxpayer money to an offshore account because someone spoofed their city manager's email address.
That happened after I left there.
City of Chickasha got hit last year, same thing. What's happening is that social engineers are using clever tricks to pose as people and get people to send money to offshore accounts. In the space of a few minutes, those individuals made more money than I would have over six months at my regular job, all by just being con men. This is happening in Oklahoma. Now, I'm not here to scare you, okay, actually, yes, I am here to scare you. The idea is that this is what you guys, as a city, can be thinking of. So, a few details here, I'll just put this up there, these are the terms that I'm using. Malware, it's a fancy name for viruses, basically. An attacker, that's a fancy name for hacker, which they don't usually call themselves that anymore. A vulnerability, that's when software or servers are weak, they can be attacked. Social engineering, it's basically online con men. And encryption is when data is scrambled so that you have to have a key to unscramble it. This topic right here is important because some of the ways that people get impacted are through viruses that actually will encrypt the data on your computer. Have any of you heard of CryptoLocker? Common viruses these days, they can come in via email, they can come in by an infected website, or sometimes your PC, if it's on a network with another computer that's been infected, will get infected. And these hit individuals, they hit businesses, they hit entire government agencies, and yes, they have hit cities in Oklahoma. And what they'll do is they'll lock and encrypt the important files. Maybe that's videos of your child's first step, or maybe that's police evidence, maybe that's your financial records. When those items are encrypted, a message pops up on your screen saying, pay us so many dollars, usually in Bitcoin, or your data will be forever deleted, and you have a time limit to do that. Now again, I'm not trying to scare you, except I am, to understanding what the threats are behind us. Now who's coming after us? Now I put this one up here on the left, governments. That sounds a little odd because it's not like your next door neighbors are going to come after you, but yes, we do have to worry about governments attacking the United States. The next war will not be fought necessarily as much with bullets and bombs, but it will be fought with data and information. And so, we have to protect ourselves. The Department of Homeland Security released a statistic earlier this year, over 50% of the United States' critical infrastructure, which includes electricity, water, wastewater, traffic control, et cetera, has been infiltrated by foreign governments. And they are looking at ways to try and get to us in the event that we start fighting that next war. Script kiddies, these are little 15, 16-year-old kids sitting in their mom's basements who just want to hack for fun and screw around. Insiders, I hate to say it, and I don't think it'll happen here, but insider threats are still a real possibility. Sometimes people want to figure out a way to maybe pad their retirement. Hacktivists, we sometimes hear about this in Oklahoma, when people are posting information online because for some reason or another, they're angry about what's been going on in their city. And of course, carders, the people who are just trying to make as much money as they possibly can. So, a little bit more, and I know I keep going into the social engineering aspect, and I'm going to try and make this quick, but I do want to give you guys a very clear idea of what's coming after us. So to summarize what just happened, this woman, hacker, just registered the domain name that's very close to, but not exactly the same, as the company that she's trying to spoof, and is now going to start sending emails as though she were the CEO, requesting access and money, wire transfers. This is exactly what happened in Enid and Chickasha, and it continues to happen to this day. Now, in her case, she's also trying to infect their computers to get more access and steal their data, but most of the hackers these days that we have to deal with, all they want is a wire transfer, and they're done. I'll go and skip ahead since the rest is kind of hard to hear. The way I bring this up, and I don't mean to offend, but the weakest part of any computer network are the users. It's just that simple. The simple fact of the matter is that IT people have been working very hard to protect the parts we can protect, but now, we've got to work hard on training. That's where this comes in. That's where ongoing cybersecurity awareness training will help your city. If I asked you to give me your password just to make sure it was secure, because I'm your friend, right? You wouldn't tell me it, right?
No.
Okay. Passwords are like underwear. Don't share them with anyone. Don't reuse them. Change them often. Always keep that in mind. Now, if we can hear it...
...because of what happened, Sony, companies that are more concerned about the safety and privacy of their information, that President Obama has unveiled a number of new proposals to crack down on hackers, and he plans to address this in the state of Michigan, which is why this government is working on this, but the truth of the matter is, we need to do a better job of protecting ourselves. You know, the most popular password in the United States is password 123, and as long as we're, as long as that's the case, we're tolerable, so today we set a camera on the home of the Congress to help people by asking them to tell us their password, and this is how that went.
We're talking about cybersecurity today, and how safe people's passwords are. What is one of your online passwords, Kevin?
It is my dog's name, and the U.I. graduate information.
What kind of name do you have?
I just call it Captain.
And what's his name?
David.
David. And what school?
School of Engineering for Pennsylvania.
What school?
Uh, just go there, it's either my...
Oh, when did you graduate?
In 2009.
Oh, great.
It's like, my birthday, and then the order of the number.
Okay. And you got this pack for a while?
Yeah, it's with my childhood.
Aw. And what's her name?
Her name is Joey.
Joey. So I got passwords, you'd be Joey, and her number?
Yeah.
Like number one?
Uh, like, my birthday.
Oh, what is her date?
Uh, June 12.
Oh, great. Very much.
Uh, 95.
Oh, great. So Joey, six, twelve, ninety-five, got it.
Can you give me your password right now? No, I can't do that.
But if you all want to know what it is, we can tell you if it's strong enough.
Oh, no, I agree with this. Um, um, let me think, okay, what is that be? Yeah, four, six, eight, and then Israel, it's only three, but it's, you know, it's pretty strong enough.
Iran, one, two, three, four.
Jem.
What you're...
Spelled G, D, M, A.
Yeah, so like...
My boyfriend's Italian pastor.
Uh, my dad was named...
What's your dad's name?
Uh, Maria.
Maria. So Maria is pastor?
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Well, you're forty.
Okay. So, we're coming to the end. A few quick items. This commission has responsibility to the city's cybersecurity, not to, not to tell you your jobs, but there are things that you can be doing to help guiding staff. And that comes down to things like accept responsibility for cybersecurity. We usually consider it for our board as part of fiduciary duty. By listening to this presentation, by being interested, and by remembering that this is an issue going forward, you've accomplished step one. You have to set the risk appetite. Part of that comes down to if staff brings new projects or expenditures that have to do with cybersecurity, part of that will be listening to that and understanding how that fits in. It's cost benefit analysis. Going through, receive regular reports of audits for not just fiduciary piece, but cybersecurity as well. Delegate responsibilities where necessary, review and affirm priorities, usually through budgeting, and stay educated. All of these are things you can do. These are some of the things we can do, I won't go over that. One of those things, of course, is what we're doing here right now. I want to leave you with one final note. I would like an honest answer to this question. How many of you are going to go home and put that thumb drive in your computer?
That was my question for you.
Well, if you'll give me just one more moment to indulge me, I'd like to bring up what some of the files are on that thumb drive that I just gave.
Take the one that you want.
So, if you had opened up this thumb drive at home, there are three files on there. Confidential strategic planning presentation, counter offer letter of employment, and executive salary report. Each one of those, if you open it up, is a simulated virus. Now, they do not do any harm. They simply report back and allow us, we use this internally at O-MAG for our staff, they allow us to report back and see who is not being skeptical. Now...
Not being what?
Not being skeptical, not thinking to themselves, maybe, maybe things are too good to be true. The favorite one there is executive salary report. One of the guys who works for me actually used to work for Dell, and found a thumb drive which had a paper label on it that said executive salary on it in front of the elevators. Like a good cybersecurity person, he turned it into the security desk and did not plug it into his computer, even though he was tempted. Now, thank you guys for indulging me, I do appreciate it.
I have a question for you, Kevin.
Yes, please.
Is it not true that you should never plug in one of these devices into a computer unless you unwrap it from the manufacturer?
I would say you're always taking a risk, unless it's brand new. There have been some reports here of late of potentially Chinese companies manufacturing them with malware on them.
Right.
That may or may not be a threat, but the simple fact of the matter is, if you don't trust the person who's handing it to you, and until today, most of you have never seen me before, don't trust me, then the best bet would be, maybe be skeptical, concerned about where the source might be.
Therefore, we should not use these memory sticks.
That's correct. I will take those back, and I really do have real stuff for you guys. In fact, I can guarantee you that there is no malware on the notebooks we're going to hand you.
One of these is how Israel took down Iran's reactors.
That's correct.
Yes.
It's called Stuxnet, and it's a very famous, very famous piece of malware that actually physically damaged equipment. And that is becoming more of a threat, too. With more systems like generators, water treatment, all of these being connected to computers, it now becomes very possible to attack physical infrastructure that people depend on for life and health using just computers. In fact, that's actually been a way that the Russians have attacked the Ukraine recently, very famous examples. Do you all have any questions?
I was watching a TV on the Discovery Channel last night, and they had shows of storage were sold in the Rockers or Walders, that had, I forgot how many megabytes of memory, and they said that's where all the casinos, and gave just this big list of stuff that was stored on those computers. And I was wondering, how smart is that to tell everybody, you know, where it is, and only a few people have access to it, but, you know, like, how smart is that?
It could be disinformation, too.
That's true.
It could be disinformation.
Yeah. It could be backed up somewhere else.
Of course, it'd be that stupid.
And, I will say that in a lot of these cases, the very expensive data centers, they will have physical security that can rival some governments. Biometrics, machine guns, I mean, it can be rather intense. Now, people pay a premium to store very important information there. But you're right, there's secrecy can be helpful.
That's what worries me about it. You send stuff to iCloud, and it's stored there, and you're supposed to be the only one that has access to it, but are you really?
There's, one of the ways that you can decide to limit your risk is just not put your data where others can get it.
I didn't know you were such a geek, Commissioner.
What?
I didn't know you were such a computer geek.
I'm not.
You get to be our age, you get paranoid.
Well, I know about that.
Or when you get cybersecurity certifications, then you get paranoid, too. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kevin. We are adjourned.